Do approval of minutes from previous meetings?
I'll make motion to approve all of the past meetings that we've had last couple of weeks.
Second? Second. Special meeting on Thursday, August 6th. Special meeting Monday, August 10th. Regular meeting Tuesday, August 11th. Special meeting Monday, August 24th. Special meeting August, Wednesday, August 26th. And special meeting Friday, August 28th. Motion by Julie, second by Bob. Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number three, claims and payroll.
I'll make a motion to pass claims and payroll.
Okay, second?
I'll second it.
Bob?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries. Reports, manner. Police Department. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Hi. Um. There's no, like you always would get a sheet, boxes of numbers in your pocket. That did not happen this month because we're kind of trying to change it around a little bit. So I'm just going to talk to you about what went on. We had eight disturbances and that comes from, we were from loud noises to fights in town. A lot of those disturbances were child exchange students. Domestic disturbances, we had four. Lot of suspicious activities we were at the fore. People walking around late at night behind people's houses. One death call, we had 12 traffic. Lot of them were on accidents and like that. Six welfare checks, a lot of them were Corona people. We had three fraud calls and they were basically phone scams. That's been going around again. We had six Health and Human Service, we assisted them on interviews. One warrant. Four dog calls. And there were a couple citations on those and there's one or two cases, there's like seven charges going to court again on the dog call. We assisted rescue, lot of information calls. One vandalism. Two illegal dumpings, one citation, and I think that is taken care of.
Those all done?
How did you catch me? Did they see you?
Yeah, good cameras.
Oh, good. Nice.
That's good because I've seen vacuum cleaners out there, seen all sorts of stuff, so that's really good.
So, went and talked to him, told him, showed him some pictures and he went to the city and got it taken care of on what it's finally been.
Good.
Good job.
Okay. Three tickets, some of the tickets, one was for a dog. One was for a vehicle violation. Now when you go disturbances and tickets, we had one instance this month where we had, you know, a fight's usually between two people? A brawl is like eight or more altogether on a pile. And it was lengthy investigation, lot of statements, but I believe there were six charges being filed on the brawl.
Is that the Keystone?
Yep. That was the Keystone brawl, there was probably 15, 20 people involved totally. But the call came in at 3:00 AM. But it happened earlier, about 2:00. So a lot of them are in litigation yet. I did find unlicensed vehicle. One unlicensed vehicle is gone, out of town, and that would have been on South King Street. Another unlicensed vehicle has been licensed. That also was on South King Street. One accident. Couple unlocking vehicles, and one theft. That's pretty much what I have. Any question?
I know there's a unlicensed vehicle to the street east of me. It's a pickup, has trash cans behind it, so you can't see the tags. That's been unlicensed for a long time. And it's picking up room on the street.
I also have talked to county deputies and they've been kind of helping out, working days and everything, and they wrote two or three tickets in town already for expired registrations of unlicensed vehicles.
Right, I just know these are, there's no front license plate and these are, the back license plate's being hit by trash cans.
Sure. East of your place, you said?
Yep, a block to the east.
Okay.
When was the Keystone brawl?
Pardon?
When was the Keystone?
Well, you gave a...
What Miami?
During that karaoke at D and K. They somehow got a 16-hour liquor license for some reason, which I don't know why it was 16 hours. But some people were doing pretty good, having a pretty good time. Then there was kind of a family gathering to do some other deals and they end up going down there and there was a little argument. So D and K owner, he closed up shop a little earlier than what he planned, but... So then they moseyed on down to Keystone and that's when it all started again.
Yeah, that's what, I was wondering if it was there in a special license thing?
No.
Okay.
The person who had the special license, it wasn't his place, it might have started there, but he closed shop down right away when he seen there was a problem.
Anything else for Jerry?
Jerry, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
Economic Development, Susan? Good evening.
Good evening. I didn't get my report either.
I was gonna say, did I miss it?
No.
There's probably five, six pages in here.
I have been buried in grace, so. So quick updates, you've probably heard, we did get the fourplex grant. So, we are, been working with Bruce Curtis on that. The LLC has been formed, we're working on acquiring the land. We had options on that before, so we're working on the purchase of the property now. The original grant was to purchase half that block. The investor now wants the whole block, so that whole block will go. In the hope that once this project is done, we'll flip it and do it again on the other side, so we'll end up with eight units instead of four. So there's been some training on that grant. The DED has a new online system called the amplifier, so I did that training last week with NINED. And then there's a contract WebEx meeting coming up on September 15th. I did invite Bruce Curtis to that myself and then I did some link to Jeremy Tar, so that is where they're going to go over the contract details, what's expected, what's allowed, what's not. And then we get to sign our life away grant. So, there's that. On the CDBG DR disaster grant, we're still waiting on the guidelines for that, but that's the one where you can get back their 12% that you extended any disaster FEMA match that you had to put up during the flood last year, so as soon as we get the guidelines, I'll work with Jeremy and Courtney and figure out what your dollar amount is and we'll go after that. On the downtown revitalization, so the DTR planning study is finally complete. I did email it to Jeremy and Courtney a while back, I don't know if they forwarded it to you guys, but it's about, with all the attachments, 130 pages. But it is a really interesting read, if you're interested in that, I thought it interesting anyway. They were very thorough, I was really impressed with the company. I have no complaints whatsoever.
And where's that located, on the city website or?
Not yet, I just emailed them the link.
Yeah, you just emailed to us, so I haven't had a chance to do anything. That's fine, could you just maybe email it out to us so we can?
I actually prefer to put on website because everybody can look at it if they want to. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's good. And I mean, it's kind of neat. They've thought of things that we wouldn't have thought of, so it's pretty cool.
So what's the next step on that?
So Phase 2 then is applying for the $435,000 to actually do the work downtown. That was kind of proposed in the, in the planning document. So that's what we'll do tonight, here in a little bit, I think we have a public hearing about it. See if we get your public input on applying for that Phase 2 and then your blessing. And then for Phase 2, so the grant submission is September 15th and then we should find out by November-ish if we get awarded. So project activity can really start beginning January, February of next year. We'll sit down with the DTR committee and kind of draft an application, kind of go through all the guidelines. We've got what Creighton used, what Pender used, what Neely used, and we'll kind of mash it up and come up with something that's good for us. But basically, what we're going to propose is that downtown business owners can, in the Highway 20 corridor, can apply for funding to rehab their buildings. The grant would cover 75% of the project and then they would cover the 25%. So what you'll see when we talk about the grant later is that the grant's $435,000 with a $100,000 match required. We are not coming up with a match, the business owner is with that 25% that they have to kick in when they do a project. We'd like to get all the projects done in a year, but it hasn't been feasible for any of the other communities, so we're kind of looking at a two-year turnaround on that. The city is also eligible to access some of the DTR funding, so I did put in for the budget for the city about $20,000 of that funding to do demolition. To demo the PCSI building if we get ahold of that and also the old Mary's building on Knights Street. And if there's anything else that comes up, so basically the grant would cover 75% of the demo cost, city would cover the other 25.
What about revitalizing the building down there that we used to use for the city?
Yes, you can access funding for that, and they did come up in the DTR plan, a really cool picture of how that could look. To dress that up. Yeah, it was nice. So, there's some projects in there that the city could apply for as well. Other than that, I've been kind of wrapped up in the USDA RPIC grant, this one's an innovation grant, kind of came out late. They only gave us a three-week turnaround, it's due tomorrow, so. The innovation grant is, you guys need a new comp plan, city comprehensive plan, you need a new strategic plan. Combined, that's about $37,000, $38,000. So, the city of, or the county of Pierce and the county of Madison approached, we share a zoning coordinator, approached her and asked if there was a way that they could update their comp plans. So we started looking at the comp plans for all of the communities in both counties. We're all sitting at like 2003, 2004, so those plans are obsolete. So this innovation grant kind of came out, we're stretching it a little bit, but what we're going to do is we're saying with updated comp plans for the county, the county's going to kick in the 15% match, which will provide a free comp plan and strat plan for all of the communities. To make the grant a little more competitive, we're going to maybe ask for you guys to throw in a $1,000 match, just to show that there's some local participation. But what that'll do is, when we went through ECAP in 18 and we kind of created that holistic, organic, strategic model, it'll put a comp plan on the table that will assess all of your assets, help you determine future growth, other future needs, policies, zoning. You'll sit down with the planning firm, kind of create a focus group and kind of go through how you want the city to do that. And then they'll take that document, the ECAP that we went through in 18, and then create with those two things a new strategic plan that we can use to implement. The fact that we haven't had a comp or strategic plan that's updated has held us back from applying from some grants, so we need to get that updated if we want to go after the housing thing again next year. They kind of let us do it this time around, but it's not, they're not going to let it through again with our old comp plan, so. So we're working with all of the county, Pierce County and all of Madison County. Basically, what all the other towns have to go through is ECAP and then they'll get all the stuff that worked, but we'll be ahead of the game because we've already done all that, so. We'll find out September 30th if we get it. If not, we'll have to find another way to get a comp plan, and it's not in the budget, I'm assuming, for this coming year, so maybe the year after, so. Other than that, our marketplace website for PCV is live, we're still registering business owners, there's a webinar on Thursday at noon to help all of our home-based business organizations, brick and mortar building, service-based businesses, get online and start using that website as a e-commerce tool. And then, we have a new coffee shop in the county, Ribbit Roasters in Pierce, you can finally get your Mocha lattes. Real coffee in this county, which is kind of exciting. And then on the community building, TC Energy still has a hold place on all of the grant stuff, so I haven't heard much from them, but there may be some other projects that are more important, so. See what happens if they end up being here. Any questions?
Where's the webinar?
It's going to be online and Brooke, Curtis, it'll be in the paper on Wednesday, but there's a link on the Plainview News and then I'll put a link on our Facebook page.
Okay, good.
Okay?
City Superintendent Kirk. Bob from Traveling Tiger said thank you for the first time when I talked to you till the next time he's here for trimming that tree.
Oh, yeah. There's a lot more in there that need to be trimmed though.
He said to tell you thank you.
We got to leak up the pool, I'll be working on that this month, hopefully get it winterized. We put the fence in at the transfer station. Working on a new permit and they advised us that it needs to be a little more secure at the entry gate, so with the fields and whatever, so. We'll be working on that. Interviewed a few guys, hopefully I'll get something going this week and get something. And Hank's property is intended to be set for the, I'd say like the 21st, somewhere that way for this month. Talked to Ward this morning, so hopefully we can get that taken care of, but.
You mean demo or?
Yeah. They're going to take the trees and house and everything, so. Just clean it all up.
That's great.
I don't have any of that house, I guess, so.
Thank you, sir.
Good luck with the pool.
Yeah. Hopefully I got the right parts.
Number five, discussion action resolution number 611, municipal annual certification of program compliance.
This you have to do every year in order to get your, basically your highway allocation for your 1-6 street plan. We just send it to the state, basically tell them that we're following the guidelines of what they set forth for your highway allocation and for 1-6 street plan, so. Just the first step in your 1-6 for this year. I'm making a motion to approve resolution 611.
Second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Bob?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Pam? Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries, number six. Discussion action resolution number 612, death child at place signs, requested by Josh Dixon, 208 South Maple.
So, he actually came in and talked to, kept talking to me about it. His mother has a foster child that lives with her now and she is deaf, and so he just asked if they could have signs posted on either direction coming towards that street, so. So I guess we'd have a little amendment to this because we would put multiple, so it'd be, shall be posted with signs, so take out the A and have the S indicating a caution for death child. And then at the end, you would put such signs as soon as possible, so, well, order the signs and everything, but. Actually about it.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 612, making the changes, adding signs, middle places on that to have Bruce change that. Yep.
Second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Pam? Bob?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number seven, discussion action Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District Grant Administration Contract. And I forgot all the NAHTF grant. I don't remember those.
Nebraska, we'll have to do that.
There you go. Trust fund, there you go.
Bruce Curtis did look over this because Lowell wanted our attorney to look over it, he emailed me this morning and said everything looks fine, it's pretty much similar to the CDBG one you signed, or you approved last year for the DTR grant. This is just giving Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District the authorization to basically administer our grant. So, they take care of all our drawdowns, all that kind of stuff, so I don't have to do all that, so.
Very nice.
I'll make a motion to approve the NEEDD grant administration contract, NAHTF grant.
Second?
Second then.
Any discussion? Tyler?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Pam? Motion? Motion carries 4-0, okay. Number eight, discussion action keynote grants, Plainview Sports Boosters in the amount of $3,000 and this is the most, $36,513 and 7 cents currently in the pot for keynote.
Two people there.
Yes. Would like to approach or?
Welcome. Either way, if you want to come up. I don't know, do you, do you have any questions about it or?
Looks like a great project.
Yes.
Really does.
Any update is great.
Investing in the U.
Absolutely.
Are you guys good with the full amount?
I am.
Karen, Pam?
Seeing issue with it, I mean.
I will make a motion to approve the keynote grant application for the Plainview Sports Boosters for the full amount of 3,000.
Second? I'll give it to Pam. Bob?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number nine, discussion action zoning board recommendations for building permits. Dalton Gessinger, 307 North Fourth Street for a garage, and Tim Guzman, 202 North Main Street for a lean at two.
I'll approve the building permit for Dalton.
I'll second it.
Second? Any further discussion? Bob?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries. Second for Tim Guzman?
I'll make a motion to approve this.
Where is the link going to be?
Right next to his garage.
It will be?
On the east. And going towards his house.
Yes. Toward the east, between the garage and the house. Yeah, very good, so to map it out, yeah. Northern. Sorry. Yes. Motion?
You made the motion.
You made the motion, second?
I'll second.
Second? Tyler?
Aye.
Pam? Julie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number 10, discussion action updates on nuisance properties, 207 South King, 209 South King, and 107 West Locust.
These are the ones we sent out letters for after last meeting and I just sent your email to go check them out. So it's kind of to you guys if you think that they've cleaned up what you want them to or not, because if they haven't, then we go to the public hearing is the next step. I think we need to go to the public hearing, that's just my opinion. On all of them or?
Yeah, and 107 West Locust.
He has made. Improvement.
There's really one for tractor cab and.
But I do have tickets, I know he has cleaned some stuff up there, so.
I think we should also, just to go further, a little bit more, but he's done a nice job.
Okay.
And the other two are disaster.
Yeah. So, I'll make a motion to do them all. All three of you.
I'll second that.
Bob?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number 11, discussion action approval for roof ventilation here at the library for the new laser cutter.
I'll take this one, okay. So they got their, they're going to apply for the grant for the new epilogue laser they demoed this year. And needs ventilation, so they're actually going to go straight up to the roof and so they just want permission to cut a hole in your building.
Who's going to be doing the work?
To cut it, the hole?
Both of them. Do we have an estimate on?
But we're not doing it, we're not paying for any of that. That foundation is going through, yep, yep, so.
They just needed permission to poke a hole in it.
I'll make a motion to have the roof ventilation at the library for the laser cutter.
Second? Tyler?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number 12, discussion action ordinance number 959, city administrator salary.
This you have to do by code, you just have to update it, so. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 959.
I'll second it.
Second? Bob?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Pam? Tyler?
Aye.
Wait a second, third?
Always a second and a third. I wasn't even thinking about that. That's great.
Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Hey, we still got five minutes. Discussion, number 14, discussion action resolution.
We'll do that when you're done with the.
Oh.
Yep.
Which one?
Better skip down next one again.
Oh.
Because you'll want to do that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry, you're right. Number 15. Okay, number 15, discussion notice of settlement of the claim of a former employee. Item, agenda item number 15, statement on notice of settlement of claim of a former employee. Nebraska law requires the city to maintain a public record of all settled claims and this agenda item is intended to satisfy that requirement. The former police chief filed a workers' compensation petition and a tort claim against the city. The city agreed to settle the claims in exchange for the former police chief's agreement to release the city from all liability related to his claims. Do we, do you want to do 16 or do you want to, do we have enough time for that?
There may be some comments from, I don't know, the attendees, I don't know if that'll give us enough time. If anybody has any input. We can.
We can stop off, I guess, talking about it. Alright, so this is pretty much approval to advertise for a police chief slash officer. Currently, Jerry's taking over the interim police chief, but even if he wants to be police chief, he still has to apply for the position according to our personnel handbook. So we will apply, we will apply, put our applications for both, police chief and/or slash officer. And then also, an update, we actually talked to the county and I've looked at hiring some of their part-time deputies, other deputies are part-time, work around here if we need them, if they can't cover, so. I guess Jerry's been talking with them one-on-one, I don't know if he has any input on.
Well, out of the two deputies that were interested, one is going to be doing a lot of harvest work on his own property. And the other one's doing a lot of part-time work, not. So, they have been coming into Plainview during the days when they work and at night they'll make the swing through. They have been doing a lot of patrolling during the day.
Yeah.
But, I'm sure life's days off.
Really? Trying to blame you. Is there any other discussion? Well, if not, I'll make a motion to approve the, to advertise for police chief slash police officer.
Yeah, we both, yeah, if I put up two different ads and then we'll see what we get.
Sounds good.
How far out do we go, Jerry?
As far as we want, but we'll put it on the Nebraska website, the police website and anywhere that Jerry knows, I mean, he'll know what.
He put it out on the training center.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Website, because a lot of officers used to be non-law, they'd go pay their own way and they'd come out with jobs that were out there. I went non-law 35 years ago, so.
Certified, certified.
Probably certified already.
Possibly, depends on what.
Certified would be nice.
I mean, for the chief to have to be certified, but the officer, I mean.
The problem we're having right now Northeast Nebraska, you take three or four counties just around here and a lot of cities, they're not even getting applicants.
I did talk to Rick Eberhart, he just hired his fourth one for the first time in a long time, his deputy, and he said it took him six months. So, he said be prepared for.
Yeah.
Longly. And he said his guys were certified even, they had, but they had to, so.
Is the city looking to just hire one person or two people or?
But to see what applicants.
Depends what we get for applications, I guess.
Currently budget, we have budget two budget currently, this next fiscal year.
So possibly two. Might be a good time to discuss that, I would think. What does the city want or?
We've kind of talked about it a little bit.
Yeah, we've got two in the budget for this next year, so.
So you talked about it in the budget meetings a little bit?
It's already been approved for the budget.
Right. Well, not.
Well, in the budget workshop, we talked about it.
To build it into the budget.
It will likely be in the budget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Has there been any like public open discussion about what you guys looked at or what you considered or what the options were?
I'm sorry, what did you say, public discussion, yeah, the workshop was open to public. It was, it's over.
It's done.
We have a budget hearing now.
More budgetary news at all?
No, we have one budget workshop.
Just one, okay.
Can I have a second for the motion for Julie's? Can I have a second for the motion for Julie's?
I'll second.
Okay. Bob?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number 13, public hearing, 7:00 PM, downtown revitalization grant application.
Do you have a public hearing notice, Brian?
Yep.
Do you want to read it?
Oh, no, we don't have a notice. We just, it's open to the public. We're open to the public hearing right now, 7:00 PM.
Nothing with some language at least and. If not. Basically, this is just your chance to talk to.
I mean, we have it in the past, I guess.
Yeah, we have.
It just announced that we have a public hearing and it's open for the public.
Right. So the public hearing is for the application of downtown revitalization grant for Plainview, Nebraska. Our downtown in Tuppis is our downtown proper area along Highway 13, Locust Street, and then the corridor down Highway 20. The grant will allow us to access $435,000 from the state of Nebraska to work on buildings. This would include improving the facades. So that would include windows, doors, roofs, bricks, sidewalk, accessibility issues, roofs. And on the interior, we could address flooring and bring all electrical and plumbing up to code on the first or second story. As you heard before, the city has some old downtown revitalization committee, which is actually our LV840 board. They'll be the ones that oversee the money if we're awarded. They will review all the applications from the business centers and start implementing the process. This will be a one to two-year process that happens across downtown and Highway 20.
Are you asking the city to apply for this or are you saying this is where the business people are supposed to apply?
The city has to apply for the money first.
If we get it then.
And you'll tell us when.
Yes.
Yeah. If the city receives a grant, then you as a business can apply for part of that money, 75%, right?
Yeah, wow. Depends.
Depends on how much. Yeah.
Make it 25, I'm not paying 75.
What's the total for one business dollar?
That's something that if we get awarded, the DTR committee will sit down and it also depends on how many business owners want to participate. At this point, we have about 100% participation. So basically you have to look at how much money is available and how many people want the money. And then we have to start figuring things out from there. We kind of set a cap about $25,000 because for a business owner to put in 25%, the cap of 25,000 is about the sweet spot for what they can afford. For, like when we did this in Creighton, if you had a project that was over 25,000, then we did a 50-50 split with the business owner just because they had a bigger project and we still wanted to have money for other people. When you start getting real tight, like once the money starts flying, it might come down to, like you might have a whole bunch of roofs, which is something that we ran into Creighton. So it's not really like something visually that you see, but it is important for building condition. So we went roofs like 40-60. We paid for 40%. Business owner paid for 60. These are all things that the DTR committee will kind of set down and kind of implement as soon as we get awarded the money. But yeah, I mean, the biggest thing is just trying to make it stretch to make sure we get everybody that wants to participate.
Does the city put in like for the infrastructure, like sewer and water, mains that break, hurt?
Not with the DTR. I mean, if they broke like a regular, like they regularly, I mean, if they just broke, I suppose there's a policy the city has. I don't know what it is.
You don't get to get part of that money?
What, you mean?
Like inside or what?
Well, like if you, say somebody puts in a, a big dishwasher and uses a lot more water and breaks the main because it wasn't very good in the first place. Have we looked at that?
That I have not been across.
The main, the city will take care of it. The service line is yours.
Oh, I know. That's why I didn't say.
You can use the money to fix the infrastructure of your building. So if you did have plumbing issues and maybe that service to the main would be an issue or other plumbing, you know, issues that you want to put a bigger pipe in or something like that, that you can do with this.
The city won't be using it for mains. We want to go to the businesses.
Yeah.
So.
Any other?
There's a separate grant for that at the city.
Any other public comment?
Does the, like with the telephone company, if they wanted to put the speaker system downtown, is that, would that be under this?
Not necessarily. I don't think so because this is just like for, basically you're building in your business and based on to improve the consumer experience and to improve the condition of the buildings to raise the value of your building and also to stop deterioration. So something like speakers through downtown, no.
I think they're planning on just.
Luckily, I'm not on the DTR committee. That's up to them. But typically, no. The biggest thing is, is what is going to have the most visual impact on the downtown? What is going to secure the building for the business owner? Because the biggest problem you guys have is that you're drowning in some of these buildings. You know, with all of the costs associated. So how do you shore up the windows and the roofs and the bricks so you have no water issues and your heating and cooling bills kind of get to a reasonable level? And how do you upgrade your HVAC and electrical? So when you sell your building, it's actually worth 70,000 and it's not something that you're just asking for. You know, so. Overall, the $535,000 investment in downtown will be bigger than that because when we complete this project in two, two years, that's when we are reassessed by the county. And you'll see the valuations come up for our commercial buildings, which will help you guys in the long run. You have a little bit more money to play with. So.
Last call for public comment. Okay. Number 14, discussion action resolution number 613, application for CDVG Community Development Block Grant Funding.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 613, the CDVG.
Motion by Julie, second by Pam, Bob?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Number 17, city council comments. Bob?
I think they don't have too much. So I was just, hopefully the council was aware that if you read the manor, they're pricing out their apparel insurance.
I saw that.
And majority of the insurance companies are not even covering nursing homes. The one that did cover the nursing home, their deductible for wind and hail was $109,000. Their deductible. So I just want to make sure everybody read that and look through that because it's pretty good information to look at.
Absolutely.
Pretty alarming.
Every time you see the word Lloyds of London.
Yeah, it's pretty alarming. That's all I got. Just thanks everybody for doing a great job.
Okay. Julie?
Thank you to everybody. Thank you, Jerry, for picking up the extra hours where needed to be done. We appreciate. And the report.
Yeah.
That was a good report. Thank you.
Pam? Tyler?
No, I don't.
Did I make this in there? Ask her, do you have any?
We saw our budget hearing on Monday.
I will be at work. So will everybody else able to attend there?
Will they have a reminder?
6:30.
6:30 here.
Okay.
Then we'll do our tax request and then after that.
Be able to.
I'm not sure if I'll be here or not.
We have to have at least three of you.
I gotta go to Omaha.
If you have any questions, like I said, call me beforehand. I think, I think they have a pretty grasp on it beforehand, which is good. So.
Is it at 6:30 or 6?
6:30.
6:30.
If you're able to.
That's Monday?
Monday.
As far as I know, yes.
I'll have to check.
As long as Kicker publishes it, it'll be next Monday.
I have no doubt yet.
What is Monday, Jerry?
14th.
14th, yeah.
Be the second Monday of the month.
I should make that work.
Okay. We just have to have.
Yep.
Yeah, three of you. Anything else to include? Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. All in favor? Thanks for coming.